Okay. I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board Meeting of Monday, August 14th, to order at 7:02 PM. We do have a full board tonight, and if we wait 10 seconds, Yumaila, the alternative is here also. We just got started, Yumaila, perfect time.
Okay, sir.
So the first item on the agenda is the public comment period. I'm sorry, the approval of minutes for July 25th, sorry, skip right over that. Does anyone have any comments they wanted to add in other than what was already circulated? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lisa, all in favor. Okay, now the next item on the agenda is the public comment period, so this is an opportunity for anyone from the public to bring anything up that's not already on the agenda for tonight.
Susan Ainsley covering for the Board of.
Susan. Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move that we close the public comment period.
Motion by Lisa, second by Jim, all in favor.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is to review special permit number 2021-4516 Lansing Meadows. Eric Getzmann has requested an amendment to special permit number 2021-4516. Planning Board will determine if the request is a major or minor change. Mike, did you want to say anything?
The only thing I have is, yeah, you need to determine if it's a minor change and you can proceed with discussion. If it's a major change, then we have to push it off to the next meeting because it, I have to put in for a new public hearing.
Eric, anything that you wanted to bring up?
Sure. Just to bring it's last month that was in front of you, I think I submitted the my request for a minor change to the existing permit mid-July, July 25th. I'd just like to ask that it be considered as a minor change. I filled out the application again through Mike Scott for the special permit. It's the exact permit I applied for, for a year ago, the exact request that I asked for. Nothing has changed. I mean, I've been looking for the project bigger or smaller, the exact same project. So I'm hoping that based on that, that it'd be a minor change. And just two last things, as I proposed last time, I would ask that you extend this special permit to a condition I'm asking for only because I'm trying to get a contractor, schedule filled out, one, you know, rates have moved up, so it does open up hopefully a little more some builders' ability to build, but they can be six months out, they can be eight months out. The fact is, they're going to ask me if I have the ability to build these if they put me hard on their schedule. And as soon as my litigation clears up, we'd like to get right back at it and get it on the schedule of the contractors. With that said, it's important that we keep the special permit open so they know as soon as that happens, we can get on the schedule and keep this thing moving forward. We've got people living in, you know, in the Arrowhead Project Downs, we call Blue Hair and Patio Homes, the people there enjoy it because they can walk, we've all been many as we talked about over the years. You know, it's one of the few places where you can live and park and have a single level home for the 55 and older. And we have other people who like to move in, I just don't have the housing to do it. So as soon as we can get it built, we can accommodate additional people who work at Lansing. So I would request that you take a serious look at this and make that a minor change so we can keep this thing moving forward.
Comments from the board? Any had some, Lisa?
Well, I, I don't think it's a minor, I don't agree. I think that we still have loose ends on Phase One, and to the point of, you know, I'm concerned if we don't just kind of button all up Phase One. What I'm hearing is that there's a financial consideration involved here, and I'm concerned that perhaps we would never see Phase Two have started. And I would like to see Phase One completed so that the people that are looking there are protected. I really don't quite understand how that all works if Phase One isn't completed. I also feel that should we, you know, decide it's major and it's really, I don't know, we meet twice, twice a month, we are pretty nimble as an organization, and I don't see how it would slow you down terribly. Up to this point, I mean, we knew this deadline of July of the 24th, you know, was, was here, and I thought that you had secured your builder.
We had.
Apparently not, and so this didn't happen.
Well, we, if I could respond, a couple things, we did secure the builder. The issue is the IDA stepped in and terminated our pilot here unbeknownst to us. But what that does to the builder is the builder wants to make sure there's the bank is in place, funded as you go forward, and right now that freezes.
Well, that's what I'm, what I'm hearing, as I said, is that there's a financial consideration here, and, you know, we are really independent of the IDA. Our decision, I think, has to be independent of the IDA.
Well, the other open items we have, we've gone through the checklist of, you know, there was a couple of issues. One is still the easements we have, which we're working with Natalie's firm, my attorney and their attorney, to get through that. And it, I mean, we have everything drawn up now, it's just getting the verbiage there. The other open issue we had, I believe, in this portion was the landscape, it wasn't complete, and that is now being completed by including the landscape as far as the Phase One requirements. So I think as far as the Phase One, I think we've addressed, you know, I might be wrong in that, Lisa, but I think it's been addressed. And again, we'd like to move forward as quick as we can, but the other issues, we weren't able to do the subdivision, which we requested a couple of years back. What that does makes it all one parcel tied to one bank. So it makes it difficult to move forward until we clean up the litigation.
But there's nothing new, I mean, this is all knowledge that we've all had.
Michael, can you comment on, other than the easements, outstanding items from Phase One?
There's a few trees on Building Two that need to be replaced. Now, the four units that are in Phase One all have a temporary CFC, a lot of that had to do with easements and the fact that the, the slip is still open, so the site plan is not complete. I also had a question that, I was under the understanding that the pilot was, they pulled the BJ's, and not so much for the residential. If you can explain that to me, Eric, I don't know how that works.
Well, the, the pilot is funded by the BJ's, and the proceeds are used towards the housing. So BJ's is what drives the pilot.
BJ's is what drives the pilot?
BJ's is what funds on an ongoing basis the pilot.
Well, except that part of that, of the pilot was the understanding that there were going to be these other ingredients such as residential, bird sanctuary, that kind of stuff, and I thought they were linked. That's most my understanding.
Not, not back to the pilot voice, no.
My understanding of working with the IDA is that IDA never even considers a pilot unless there are these other community benefits. So while the funding might come from BJ's income, the pilot is dependent on, you know, the wetlands piece and the housing piece. So they are all tied together. I mean, I've worked with IDA.
They are tied together.
And we've gone, we've gone back through the IDA over the years, and that's all been amended as we amended and we increase the area. So we went back and we amended what was part of the wetlands here to create more of a building area to accommodate more density. That was all gone through the IDA.
Well, I, I still go back to the point is, okay, you've got this issue with the IDA. What we have to decide is whether what you're now requesting of us, and, you know, how you got your finances to do this project, in many ways, I don't know whether I, I need to even worry about that. What I need to worry about is that you have a project that you're going to complete for us, because as, as we've been through this for some number of years, over 10 years, and so I have some real brave concerns about extending and extending and extending. I just have very great concerns about doing that. I don't feel as though that is really in our best interest at this point. I feel that it's a big request.
Does the village want to have, I mean, the question is, do we want to have more housing here, and I'm trying to take the fastest route we can, that right now is we have one parcel, and it's in litigation. And I can't, I can't go to someone and get funding for it while it's in litigation. You know, we have a parcel, and I've got a builder who also, you know, wants to see a bank loan in place that he can draw against when he builds. And what I'm asking for is that, again, the application I submitted, I haven't changed anything I've asked for in the application except extending the dates, which I understand, but by asking, by keeping this permit open, it's the exact same one as before, as soon as I can resolve this, I can reach out to a contractor, the contractor who agreed to do this, and tell them it's in place, we can move forward.
So, just to clarify, because I'm hearing two different things here, is your funding, going to the funders, dependent on clearing this special permit, or is it clearing your litigation with the IDA?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Going to the funders and securing the funding, is that dependent on you having your special permit extended, or is it dependent on your IDA litigation being completed?
Extend this special permit so it's in place, so as soon as the litigation is done, I can pick up the phone and call and tell them let's move forward, because otherwise I have to come back here, meet with you, go through everything and get it done again. But I can have people look at this and just put it on their schedule, you know, put it on your schedule for the spring, subject to this. At least they know if I had the ability to build it, almost all contractors will look at it, you know, you can come to me, if you don't have a right to build, I'm not going to take you seriously, you're not going to go on my schedule. It's just the way they work, you know, because they can fill, they want the sure thing, they can put their schedule, lock it up. That's all I'm saying, is this has been out there, the long as we can keep this open. I'm just asking for the board to extend it so that when I do have the ability and we get this resolved, that I, you can quickly put us on that I know is for real.
So I, I will share a concern, I don't think it's the best interest, and this is my opinion, I don't think it's the best interest of the village or the planning board, honestly, to have just an open standing special permit out there. We have no idea what's going to happen with the litigation. I don't think we just keep things open out there, that's the whole point of the approval process and other pieces that are built into that approval process, and, you know, the review process for requesting an amendment to a special permit. So my opinion is, I don't think it's in the best interest to, of that.
If I'm asking to extend it for the one-year time period, then, I'm not asking.
It's actually two years. I was just saying, it's already been extended one year, this is now two. And, you know, litigation, excuse me, let me, let me finish. When, when it comes to litigation, we know somebody could lose. What happens if you lose? And we're out here with this extension and this situation. I think it would be better to just take a little step back here. Like I said, we are very, we have been very accommodating, we meet very frequently. I just feel.
So I just want to clarify that your, the current deadline for Phase Two is October 2023, and you're now asking to extend it to 2025.
There were, there were two deadlines on there.
Yeah, but the ultimate end, end date is now up to, you're asking to be October of 2025, so a two-year extension. For your letter.
Yes.
We had twenty.
Yeah, it's twenty.
The current, what are the current dates now, the other?
In your letter, it says, you requested a.
A special permit today, what is it?
I don't have it directly in front of me.
It was October, it was, it was July, and then it was October, I believe, was supposed to, it was supposed to be done.
Mike, can you pull up the current special permit?
This is October 3.
That's an air, but I just want to.
I just, I, I, I'm sorry, I added one year to each one, I thought, I thought the other one was twenty-three and twenty-four. I just added one, I'm asking one year for what we had before.
That's why I'm asking Mike to confirm what's in the current special permit, because I don't have it in front of me.
He's fine, though.
Yeah.
While Mike's doing that, other comments, Jim?
I'll also just make another observation, the last amendment that you asked for, I believe ultimately requested us to remove a condition that you had already passed and not met, and that was declared a minor, if I'm recalling correctly, last time you came to us. So this is now to extend out the ultimate deadline, which has not yet come. So I think there's some differentiation there from the last decision that was made that we considered.
I think last time we extended both deadlines, maybe, I'm not sure we waited till afterwards, Natalie.
I think you wanted to remove a condition that hadn't been met, and we said, I think ultimately it was declined too.
I, I usually have the other one in front, let me see if I.
We kept it in there. And that's how we came to the foundation test.
Let me see, I might have.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I forget what it was. Oh, no, 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 please, I don't.
So the old, the old permit was for.
That's it, Mike, let's let Mike pull up the official one on the screen. He's got the, he's got the most recent one now.
This is 4516.
It was July 22.
There. Can you zoom in a little bit, Mike? I know that nobody can probably see it.
You've got N, it says a deadline for completion of Phase Two, and you mean, it was 18th of July 26, which was extended. And then the deadline for completion of Phase Two would have been October 31st, 2023.
Yes. So ultimately, it's two years.
So I just added one year to both those, that's all. I mean, the 23, the October could move up because of the foundations, the end, we don't need that date because then we get on the clothes and we go into the winter time.
Okay, so, but you, do you want it out to October of 2025?
That's what the letter says.
That's what the letter has.
So that's why I'm just trying to clarify.
Oh, no.
You want October 2024.
This was in '21 we did this, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we extended, in '21 we extended the dates to July of '23 and October of '23.
I'm sorry, the last.
Oh, I'm sorry, July, July of, was it July of 20?
Yeah, this year.
I've already outlined.
In October 23, yeah.
The deadline for completion of foundation work for Phase Two Buildings 14 is the scheduled planning board meeting of July 26, 2022.
Okay.
So that's the foundation work, and that was extended through July 26th of 2023. On the next page, item O, the deadline for completion of Phase One, and all, oh, sorry, item P, the deadline for completion of Phase Two is the scheduled planning board meeting of October 31st, 2023. So if you're asking for a one-year extension on each of those, it'd be July and October 2024 respectively.
Yes. We need to resubmit that.
No, I just wanted to clarify, because you were saying one year, but the letter says two, so I just wanted the board to be very clear about the ask that is being made. And I think the other thing that's a little unclear is that.
What meeting was that?
This was December 13th of 2021 is the resolution I have. Is that when it was final? Yeah.
Did I have that in those?
December 13th, 2021. And I think one of the things that might be a little confusing is that ultimately you are asking for a two-year extension of the foundation work, because you'd already asked for one-year extension, now there's a second-year extension.
Right, we're there, we're there now, so.
Yeah, okay.
So what if the litigation gets extended? Or, actually, Jim, you had some comments, I think. Did you have something?
No, I was, yeah, but that was a good point, who knows, the litigation's been passed. I think now, Natalie, you or somebody had indicated that what the matter is still in discovery and it's making it go to trial.
It must have been Wendy.
It was Wendy, yeah.
Yeah. That can take a really long time, so.
Well, right now, we just have to decide if the board thinks this is major or minor, not whether or not it's going to be granted.
And that is solely at the discretion of the planning board.
Correct.
Because it is a PDF.
This is a special permit.
It's a special permit, yeah, a PDF.
This is the same level of degree of removal, I think, declared as a minor, that's all.
That's what, that was the distinction that I was making, Eric, is that you had missed that and you wanted it removed, and ultimately, we said, because you had missed that, it's going to be a minor. And here, you've missed one, but not the second.
Right, okay.
And we're pushing it out yet again. So I think a distinction could be made, but it's all, it's up to the board. And ultimately, the amendment that you asked for wasn't granted the last time either. We kept that condition in, and that's how we ended up with the foundation securing escrow.
We modified.
Yeah, we did a little tweak. So I think it is a little bit different from the last application that was made.
This is a third of the project, too, I mean, there's, what, four? And this is, so two, or this is two more buildings, this is a third of the project. I think that's pretty big, personally.
You know, I would love to hear from people that live there, that, you know, they love it, and that's great, and I think it just gives everyone an opportunity to take a step and look at the requests being made and the progress that's there, and, you know, both sides to come and speak on what's happening.
Okay, I think, I'm just speaking from the permitting side, usually when we're in front of a board, it's a major or minor, it's like if we want to double the size of it, or if we want to, if we want to actually change my application front. It's usually, I mean, all the changes we've had on here over the years and everything, you know, a minor usually comes back to the project itself physically. What are you doing to the project? Is it relatively, I'm just, I'm just putting out that I know it's, it's up to you, you can do whatever you like, it's, it's your discretion on major or minor. I'm just asking, I would like to continue building this thing, and if, if I have to come back and re-go through everything or tell my builders I don't have the application, I'm just, I'm not going to be on the, on the radar, that's all.
So I think a couple things, and you touched on it right there, is, this project has been in flight for a long time.
Yes.
There have been a series of minor changes, and this is just the culmination of yet another change. I realize that you may see it as just a date, and it's the exact same thing as everything before, but I think there are extenuating circumstances that have come to light around this that also have a bearing on whether it's major or minor in our eyes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would actually ask the question of if you are asking for, if, if someone comes forward with a series of minor changes, one after the other, are we looking at segmentation after a while?
Yes.
That's what I was trying to say.
Right, you do it enough times.
Yes, so, so I, I feel like we are hitting that threshold where we are, we have done enough minor changes where we're now pushing the threshold to major change.
Well, how would that be segmentation, we're not changing the project at all?
I think it's just an example of, you know, a series of minor changes eventually, wherever you look, whether it's a subdivision or other things.
Adds up.
Yep.
That's usually physical, adding.
It can be, but it also can be temporal. You know, if you're extending the amount of time, it can also become a major thing, because I would consider that a major.
I guess, to the question before the board tonight, you know, was it a minor or a major? I think as Mike said, if it's a major, we have to come back for a public hearing, I guess.
Yeah, we'd have to open up a new public hearing and start that piece of the process over.
But your permit, your special permit is still in place during that time, it doesn't preclude, doesn't close out the special permit, you can still let builders know you're good to go for that time period. Mike, am I correct? To yell at me?
Your decision whether it's major or minor has nothing to do with any other decisions you've made before.
Correct.
They're irrelevant. If it's your decision that this is major, you do not have to justify it. If you feel it's major, it's major, if it feels minor, it's minor, you don't have to give a reason or justify it, it's your decision.
And that's, and that's especially, in this case, that's what the code says.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we were looking at that, it's, it's clear.
Such determination shall be made in the sole discretion of both the board, whether it's major or minor.
Do other board members have questions or comments they want to make?
No, I do not.
Would you like a motion?
In that case, I will entertain a motion to find it either a major or a minor change.
I move that this be deemed a major change.
A second.
Motion by Lisa, second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess work with Michael, and he can, you know, do everything that has to happen for a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
That was Lisa.
Yeah, well, Lisa then.
You listed on Pat, okay. Our next item on the agenda is, oh, wait, hang on, do I enter, okay, so, vote to open up the, okay, yeah, so, a motion to open up a public hearing for special permit number 2023-4699. Nushin Amati is proposing to build a house on a recently subdivided parcel from 42 SD Drive, tax parcel number 43.1-1-1.1. Planning Board will review the request due to the site's location within the unique natural area, so we'll entertain a motion to open that public hearing. Motion by Pat. Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Michael, did you want to kick us off on this?
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple items here, and Nushin, don't, don't hesitate popping in if I'm saying something wrong or whatnot. One, there is a correction on this agenda. Since I wrote this agenda, they have listed a tax parcel number of 1.3 for the actual parcel, it's being subdivided, so instead of 1.1, it's 1.3. Put that out a few days ago.
So the last one is a good, right?
Yeah.
Here's the letter.
First thing I have to say, I do have the mailings from Nushin, so that's officially on record. Nushin and I, we discussed what was going to be involved in this, this whole process with putting a new house and this new parcel. It's in, in the unique natural area, and it also borders steep slope area. It's very close to water conservation area, I mean, it's just got the whole thing. It's not that it compiles, but it still needs a special permit no matter what. And speaking with Nushin, she has sent us a part one of a short EA. Also, we spoke about what was going to be required from the planning board. Couple of the items, one of them would be, because of special permit, you would be put in a sidewalk, but that can be, that's up to the planning board for that decision. Also, there is partial to the tree law, which is going to require an arborist to come in, basically count the trees and see how many can be replaced, or see how many need to be taken down to meet village code. There was also, with any other unique natural area, there's going to be the need for botanists to come in to listen to the flora and the fauna for the property, if there's any endangered species and whatnot. These are items that, like I said, Nushin and I have, have spoken about, and obviously not enough time to have them ready for this, this meeting. It works out anyway, because in general, you take a couple of meetings to go through a special permit. And then the last item, I can let Brent Cross talk to you about, I'm assuming the past history, we're going to want to be doing something that has to do with a simple SWP, which would require some type of erosion control during construction and post-construction, but if, Brent, you want to add to that, please do.
Yeah, sure, that, that's correct, that we would want to make sure that we include both the construction phase erosion control, and, and I think that we've alluded to this in a number of past occasions, even if there's not necessarily a specific threshold of impervious area that we always as, have the right to ask for consideration. I always forget the, the number, but two, we've, we've been requesting that they do two of the green prac, recommended green practices, just to put in a, a level of effort that, you know, recognizes that they're doing either runoff reduction or some kind of basic treatment of quality and quantity. So that's something we can certainly take a look at, and I didn't know yet if the, if the bill, if the plan that we have currently is, is a specific footprint, or if that's just kind of like a, a general rectangular or a square area that you might be looking to fine tune the actual size and location.
About this one, this.
Yeah, yeah.
Nushin, is that something?
Rough estimate, like this is not precise at all, just.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, makes sense. Yep, so we'll, I'll, you know, we'll, I'll be engaged and we'll make sure we kind of take a look at it as you go and make sure that we meet those stormwater requirements.
One of, another item I want to add, let the planning board know, is there won't be any requirement for a septic system. With the new sewer system, there's going to be a lateral that's going to go under each shore drive, because Nushin's property does a shore drive. So that's actually very beneficial, that's less trees they have to come down, and if you look into the sewer, that's, that's certainly a plus. Did I miss anything, Nushin?
So that was on the SEAK.
No, Mike, Mike, you said there were some things on the SEAK that you potentially wanted to review and change, and maybe it wasn't. wanted to review and change, and maybe it wasn't worth it for us to go over tonight, or?
I mean, you could if you wanted to. There's a couple other items on there that after doing some more research, I wouldn't mind a couple of them changing or whatnot. So you could do it, but I recommend we just, you know, we can do it at the next meeting. We can go through part one, two, and three, and just do it all at once.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine, I mean, I'm fine waiting until we have an updated copy.
Yeah, because I think the waste water, for example, I guess, one is, one's I question too, because I thought, oh, I thought, talked about that. Okay, yeah, I think, let's not confuse things.
Yeah, and John Courtney had a few notes on this, right, Mike, about the sewer lines, things that he wanted to see potentially.
Yeah, let me, um, let me bring that.
I know that there's something about easement over property for the existing house to get a sewer line if wanted.
In, in general, the sewer line, if you follow my character, the sewer line is going to come over onto this property. And what it's going to do is, it's going to, it's going to have two, two major lines. It's going to tee off for this building, it's going to tee off so it comes along, and we'll take the, any type of whatnot from this building to tie into here. So what is, what I have spoken to Nushin about was having some type of easement if these two properties were ever sold, if one property was sold to someone else to have an easement that this house could actually still tie into the sewer system.
That makes sense.
And that is, you know, that's something that, if it has to have something legally written up, that I'm sure Natalie will handle that, or if we put that into a part of the resolution also.
Yeah, it looks to be a condition that once ownership is not identical, that that easement has to be recorded, because you can't give yourself an easement.
Oh.
Why?
What conflict do I have to have? What is that? That's funny. Easement for sewer.
Okay, um, so we'll wait until the next meeting to, you know, the various parts of the, of the seeker. Did anybody have any, any other questions for Nushin or Mike over there? Okay, well, then we'll see you. Nushin, obviously worked with Mike between now and the next meeting, but we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next item on the agenda is discussion of the solar array draft law. Everyone's ready. Yay! So, two things. One, we do have an updated copy of the New York State Unified Solar Permit that we have modified for the Village of Lansing. And then after the last meeting, I did take the paper copies that folks had given me, and put all those changes in here. The only thing that I have left to do, and I just figured I'd wait until everybody had another chance to look over it, is fix all the spacing in there, because it's tedious.
I have one more thing than that. I have a lot of them.
Good. Are they somewhere on a, a document?
No, because I just did it on Friday.
And I've been driving all day.
I don't know, but there's something.
If you have them on paper, you can give them to me.
Well, I don't, it's stuff that I don't know.
Maybe it's already been discussed.
Are we on the law, or on the?
Well, one, you do know, we can no longer call it the Unified Solar Permit, if you've modified it.
That's what I asked at the very beginning.
Yeah.
It's not the Unified Solar Permit anymore.
It's not the New York Unified Solar Permit.
It's the Lansing Solar Permit. Yeah.
See, you can't say unified.
I, I don't think it is a Unified Solar Permit anymore.
It sends the reason if it was unified, it would be.
I started, I said, are, can you, can?
You can modify it, but then it's not going to be the New York State Unified Solar Permit.
Yeah.
Which I think, I think, I think that's fine.
I think that's fine. I just think that's something that needs to be.
Village of Lansing Solar Permit, yeah.
Isn't that funny? Because I did, I asked the same thing, I thought, wait a minute.
It kind of makes sense. It's not a New York Unified Permit if everybody gets to change it.
It's just a solar permit.
It's just a solar permit, yeah.
Solar Permit.
So my notes primarily run the actual law. So if you want to talk about the permit.
Does that, what, what are the things that, that might be faster, obviously? Questions or comments people had about the permit?
Oh.
Other than the name of it?
The only thing that I, well, we'll see how it goes, whether they have room. Sometimes names are long. My name is Long. And so, is there enough room? Because like state and zip, you don't need much room there. Whether we just move that one a little bit? You know, that's too, it's too, like, the zip code is only going to, in state, they'll probably use like New York, right? And so, and why?
But I hope so.
Wouldn't they, one would. So what I'm saying is, is maybe could we just move the word state and zip over under the property owner and contractor name, so they have more room to fill out the street and the units, whatever. Yes? That was the only, I, I had to come up with something, right?
Are you making the changes?
Lord, yeah.
So on the back page, under Unified Solar Permitting Resources, there's an extra bullet point. Permit field inspection checklist needs to be moved up next to the Unified Solar Permit Field Inspection.
Go through the whole darn thing.
So just one.
Oh, search.
What?
Unified.
Yeah.
Oh, darn.
Casey.
Yeah, I know, but still.
And, and we have to rename everything instead of Unified, right?
Yeah.
Village of Lansing Solar Permit.
Is that what we're going to call it?
Yeah.
Noel? Solar Permit?
Yep.
You know, it's funny, because the one that West Islip won, they called that the Unified.
And they modified it?
Yes. And we, and that's when I said, can we really do this call that? The New York State. Well, okay, so I, I think it's, I, I think it's true.
Yeah, and we can change it, we'll change it in the.
Whether you can do it or not, it's kind of misleading.
Yes, it is.
That's the whole point, yeah. Because then if people go and just download the Unified Solar Permit, hey, red line, it's going to be like, it's not going to match. Okay, no, it won't match.
Those are easy changes.
And the four offices.
It's not official.
Anything else on the Village of Lansing Solar Permit?
Is, is that supposed to have a comma? No. It's the total fee received date, right? Not comma date. Jeez, fallen down on my job.
You're saying that last one should just be the date?
Well, no, it says, in the boxed area, it says total fee received comma date. It's not comma, just get rid of the comma.
Just total fee received date.
Date, total fee received, whatever. Yeah. Be consistent with dates last.
Okay, now, want to move on to the draft law?
All right.
Or do you have your, okay.
On four, on four, number on the very front page. Yeah.
You don't define CFC anywhere else prior to.
I thought we did.
Abbreviating it.
We did.
You say CFC issued.
Can we have CFC?
Yeah, but.
But it's not defined as a CFC.
What's a CFC?
That's what I asked for. I thought we did that.
You did.
Yeah, but I thought.
It's not defined before you abbreviate it.
No. I think we decided here we were going to write it out.
Write it out on four, and then it's okay to call, it's okay, it's okay to call it CFC in the official, yeah.
Yes, I think for the office use, we were going to do it CFC, because Mike knows what it means. But I said the same thing, because I wouldn't have known. So we want to write out his certificate.
Yeah, and then a current CFC and friend.
Well, actually, I think that might be the, is that the only place it occurs?
Probably, but it might help clarify that.
Right, but because we have it abbreviated up here, we should have somewhere.
Okay, so where it says New York State Unified Solar Permit is just going to say.
Village of Lansing.
And then it's going to say solar permitting is available statewide? Yeah. Okay.
It's, yeah, that whole thing.
He is going to screw up everything.
It is.
Can't we just say the Unified Solar?
It's not really unified, though.
Village of Lansing Unified Solar Permit?
Unified with yourself.
Yeah.
You don't have a split personality.
Somebody someday's.
Already worked the whole paragraph.
Yeah.
I was going to say, Pat will look for the word unified, and, because it's in the upper
left, too.
Yeah, and it's right here.
This stuff's complicated.
Here. Why would, forgive me for being out, but why are we modifying the Unified Permit?
Because it was very unwieldy, and this was way more efficient and easier to read and maneuver, because we took it from the West Islip people who had.
Had gone through the process.
You're definitely, you know.
It's extraordinary. I would say burdensome for people to fill out.
It really was. And how is West Islip doing?
I guess so. No.
My understanding is they're still municipality.
And in fact, we found some typos in there.
Yeah. Quite a few typos, actually.
Yeah, that was kind of what I thought, no. It was much more concise.
Okay.
And just the formatting, some of it. But it was just worded better, and, you know, it wasn't quite so highfalutin. It really did make sense.
I don't question it.
Could we say unified? No.
I mean, you could, you could do anything, but it's not.
Let's let, let's let, let's let Pat take a stab at it, in the essence of time, and see what we can come up with, now and next.
Welcome back. We're not done. Oh, boy. We're making great progress, though.
Yes.
We are, yeah, all right.
Okay, let's move on to the local law. Lisa, you go, you had one change.
I had, you know, the thing is, I printed this out, and what I'm not understanding is, I kept getting more pages, but, all right, so there was, there were, I think, too many places where we talk about, one is on page 156, environmental resources.
Yep.
Trees, number eight.
Yep.
Trees. I would like to say, as determined by the planning board, minimum tree density requirements.
I have that.
You got that written on there?
Did you too?
Yeah. Oh. And then the C.
Per village code, we check and may, delete requirements, secondly, maybe model other ways, right? Yes. And that also occurs on page 158, 13, environmental resources.
If you have these written down, I would love to take them.
I will get them to you again, yes.
Okay. Yeah, because those are just a copy of each other's, yeah.
That's all. Honestly, that, I did not truthfully proofread all the, the other.
I made all the other changes.
I just checked all the other changes were made, but I did not reread the whole document.
Okay. Believe me, I didn't go out of my way to make more changes other than those that people had identified. I take that back, I think I did find one that I fixed, that was extraordinarily minor. I found one that we had talked about changing before and then never did, because I couldn't find it, found it, it was like a capital O.
Natalie might have a bunch of.
Natalie has a whole bunch of stuff.
I am concerned that we have gone for brevity over clarity.
Okay.
In reading this, I was confused.
Okay.
So.
Do you want a copy of that back to look at?
So the word permit is just kind of used indistinguishably throughout, so I don't know like what permit, there's a building permit, I'm assuming there's a solar permit, there's sometimes a special permit.
What page, what?
So like, 155.
Aye. On the change of ownership, some of the original, oh, yes, I see.
What kind of permit?
Oh, right, yeah, so that, so that's very much one that we had, that we had kind of mucked around with, yeah.
Makes. It's the solar permit.
Make it, oh, make it its own. That's what, if this, I think also this change of ownership thing should be a little bit more beefed up. And I kind of liked the language that was in the model law about change of ownership and obligations that they take over, more so than just a one line. So I thought that was maybe something that could be made into its own paragraph and kind of expanded upon.
The.
I here, because there's like notification to the village that a change of ownership is happening.
Okay.
I just, I just think that's a little bit.
Might have expanded, more expanded.
The wording of D on the same page, accessory or principal, it just seems like that second sentence is misplaced, or I don't understand what's.
I don't know.
Solar Energy Systems, so the setback regulations specify structures from the underlying district, accessory or principal buildings category.
Yeah, that one's interesting.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if we did.
What is going on there?
We have to go back and take a look at the model and see what they had in there.
Yeah, maybe it was a choice that had to be made, or something like that. I can give you this, because also like, B, like B is in there, but major things. I was getting confused about site plan review, and Mike Scott, this is the question, when is site plan review required for this?
If they need, well, if there's going to be a site plan review, you guys will do that if it comes to the board.
So it's only tier two and three?
I will do the site plan. There's not so much a site plan review, because if you have a, for me, it's not, it's, if you have an array on a roof.
Yeah.
Then there are certain New York State Code requirements I have to review somewhat, it's somewhat of a site plan, but I'm reviewing how the configuration is on the roof.
Okay.
So however you want to change that or whatnot, I still review the configuration.
Sorry, that was my. And then with a tier one, that they just get a building permit from you, Mike Scott. It does not come to the board, right?
That's correct.
So then, I don't find an opportunity for the board to ask for a decommissioning plan on page 155D-E. If you never see it, how do you know to ask for a decommissioning plan?
The decommissioning plan was for ground mounted arrays, important mounted arrays.
Well, it's in tier one.
It is.
But it is listed in tier one, right? So that's.
We had talked about this. I think that that piece of it.
Yeah, the issue with that, I think the, the issue that we had was that for most tier one, there's not even going to be a decommissioning plan ever. It's only with their, with the tier one on farm.
Right.
Where they tend to be larger, and they may end up having impacts that the planning board would like to review.
Which made me question why it's a tier one.
That's part of state law, there is a piece in there about agricultural.
On farm has to be a tier one?
Yes, there's a, if you look at the model law, there's a specific blurb in there, I mean, something to the effect of, don't take this.
So like, Horowitz can do whatever on that farm?
I think there's some limitations on it, but yeah, it was, that was, that chunk of it is from the model law.
Okay.
Because we had taken it out at one point, and then somebody read it more and said, oh, we should probably, it was probably you.
Good job, Natalie. Okay. But you still won't.
But so, right, that one.
But you're right, but there's no decommissioning.
That one, I wonder if that one should almost be that, because isn't there another thing in here? I thought.
There's a little problem.
At the discretion of the code enforcement officer.
At the discretion of.
But it says first, the planning board may require a decommissioning plan, and then at the discretion of the code officer, they provide financial security. But it says first, the planning board may require a decommissioning plan, and then at the discretion of the code officer, they provide financial security.
That piece was put in there specifically so that these wouldn't have to come to the planning board, so I wonder if...
And an amount approved by the planning board.
Yes.
So, it's still gonna come to you.
Yes, for discussion, that piece.
And the district, must for planning, so you're saying the first one, you want to do that as well, at the discretion of the code enforcement?
Well, I wonder if, I wonder if we can, however those two go, I wonder if we can formulate them in the same way that, so we don't have to see everything in the case where somebody puts a few panels on their roof versus something that's larger in the agricultural zoning district. However that works.
Yeah, I mean, my only thought was that, basically what I said, that you're not gonna see them to know to require something.
Right, because it was only code enforcement.
And then are they getting a special permit under tier one?
No.
Because it says upon any amendment of the special permit in sub three of that same paragraph.
So, I wonder if that would be like a building permit, yeah.
It just seems like this might have been copied. I think it was probably just copied from tier two or whatnot.
It was probably, yeah, probably from the model, because originally, none of that stuff is in tier one. It's just like, hey, go have fun.
Yeah.
So, yeah, maybe it is, maybe upon the, you know, any amendment of the build, because do you have to amend a building permit if you're gonna change things, too? Like you, or do you have to submit a new building permit if something changes? Okay, but so, if they're changing something, they change it on the...
Prove that it's actually gonna work.
Okay. So, some sort of amendment, so it's not really an amendment to a building permit, because the building permit can stay the same. It's kind of the supporting documentation behind it.
Okay, so general requirements.
General requirements, there's a unified reference.
Yeah. I already, I already took note that we have to change unified solar permit everywhere, yeah.
But in the, in general requirements, C, B is everything's gonna require a building permit, no matter which tier.
Is right, yeah.
And C is special permit for all tier two and tier three only.
Right.
So, you're right, there's no mechanism.
Right.
That would bring a tier one to us.
For decommissioning plan.
So, well, here's, here's a question, though. If a tier one can't use this permit because it's over a certain capacity or whatever, does that automatically kick it up until tier two?
Well, you don't believe in tiers by capacity, just how they're sized.
Size and mounted.
Physical square foot.
Well, I guess on tier two, you do some capacity, but tier one at least isn't limited by capacity size. Because really, the only thing that we might have to have a decommissioning plan for is if there's an on-farm solar energy system that's sizable in some way. So, then I guess the question is, how do we say that in this, that... I think you really get away with it with two. I mean, obviously, it won't be at your discretion because you won't see it. Mike's gonna have to be at the one to flag it. There's no amendment to any special permit, so one and three are just not applicable to a tier one situation. Let me see. Well, part of the goal of tier one is to, A, not have us have to approve every single thing, and, but also to, um, to relieve a little bit of the burden on our agricultural, um, sector so that they can get to solar quicker. So, if that's, if that's the goal of having that definition of on-farm solar in tier one, then do we just remove anything that says about the planning board and just let it be at the discretion of the code enforcement officer?
And that's kind of what I was saying, we match up with, yeah.
One and three of E on page 155.
Take them out or make it at the discretion of the important code.
At the discretion of the code enforcement.
Well, that's what it says at two, an applicant must provide a financial security bond and decommissioning plan.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and bond. Oh, my God, so it's...
So, we can just remove it.
Effort. Gotcha. Finally, gotcha.
Here's what that, here's what that thing says in the model. It says, "On-farm solar energy systems are included under tier one because in accordance with New York State Agriculture and Markets Law, Chapter 69, blah, blah, blah." "These systems cannot be subject to unreasonably restrictive requirements such as site plan review, special use permits are not permitted by use of..."
Just gave you more, I'm sorry.
I'm just... Now, I gotta, I gotta put this, I gotta put this, I'll say again.
I'll keep going then. We're trying to read and figure out what I was trying to say.
But she is, but she is under seven for...
I'm on seven, yeah, I'm now looking at my notes for seven. I don't know what that, oh, make this a full sentence.
Which one?
A, there's a little bit more in the model law, and I like it how it reads better.
What page are we on, please?
156, A.
156A?
It just kind of flows nicely in the model.
Application and site plan review?
Yes.
She'll include that.
There's a little, it just kind of like, it's just very personal.
Something got changed, Mike.
It's just personal preference on A.
I don't understand how. We've only gone through it to, you know, 18 revisions. I couldn't possibly group something up. I'm being generous with 18, Mike, huh? That's under tier two, right?
Tier two. It's like a very minor change. It's like just my personal preference. It's not anything that really needs... They do the solar permit and a special permit application. So, under tier two, they're doing the Village of Lansing solar permit, a building permit application, and a special permit application.
Yes.
There's always a building permit.
Yes, I see.
I think originally, we had talked about, just like having it under the general requirements, tier one, building permit only. Tier two, blah, 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 permit, so that upfront, they would, I kind of wanted that.
Okay.
But I don't know, somehow, we didn't end up with that, because...
Well, it says, you know, building permit required for everything, a special permit for...
It's under general requirements.
It is, still, just kind of phrased differently.
It's just not as visible, so that's where we put it.
Okay, so still under seven on 155. You reference a buffering plan on B1. The buffering plan is subject to board approval, but you never come out and require a buffering plan. I think it kind of needs to be worked into A2, the actual term.
On page 150, which?
Fit six.
Oh, what is it?
7A2.
7A2.
So, it's under proposed changes to the landscape of the site.
Changes to the landscape of the site.
Including site vegetation.
Because then at B2, or I guess it's, it's under B1. So, under B1, you said the buffering plan is subject to a board approval, but you never...
Oh, we never talk about the buffering.
Ask for a buffering plan.
Yeah.
7B3, you already provide for that in general requirements, that the code officer can ask for additional information to process the building permit.
So, you think we should get rid of it?
Under 5B on 154.
Okay.
Did you look into, on 7B4, did you look into whether eight inches was like sufficient distance?
I think that goes to...
That was the standing.
I thought it was a...
That, it might have been, but that, I think, matched up with what Michael, we talked about.
Same question then on the larger commercial units for tier, because three was eight, it's still eight. And I questioned if that was sufficient.
Mike would have to look at the...
I'll have to check, we'll get what we get there.
Whatever the fire code is.
Decommissioning plan. Okay, I'm on page 157. Do you really want to have tier three available in all zoning districts?
Tier three?
I know it's with a special permit, but do you want that in, even the option to be in a controlled area?
We had talked about this at one point.
Well, isn't it partly the size of it?
I know it might not be feasible, but do you just want to even leave that open? Because who knows who's gonna buy up what and...
So, you're saying in all non-residential zoning district?
I just want to make sure that you're, even if you don't think it's possible to happen.
I think we had that in there before, and we had this very same discussion about...
Well, let's be more specific, then.
We can put non-residential in there, finally.
We could still leave, can we still leave planned development area? We should, I think, because that, we have more control.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're suggesting in all non-residential?
If that's what the board wants. I just wanted to be clear that you're allowing in all at this point.
Well, I'm not keen to have big ones.
The board's worried we're keen on it, so I want to.
I don't know, there's just one person.
Does that change in seven at all either? I mean, do we want that seven? And I think that's fine.
I think tier...
There's also size restrictions there, but that one, and I think that's fine, because that's really ground mounted.
Well, including, yeah.
Okay.
It'll be limited by certain things like setbacks and stuff somewhat.
Yeah, I'm page 157, again, eight, A2, there's no appendix four.
So...
I know that's from the model law.
So, that appendix four is an actual, it just, it just doesn't happen to be in here. We need to come up with a decommissioning plan.
And it would be in appendix one, because we're not having other appendixes. That's right.
Yes, we can reference, you know, it doesn't even have to, well, I guess, so, yeah.
How about A?
Or one, whatever. I don't know, like, number.
I don't know what, I don't know how the rest of the code is, forget it.
Yeah, we just haven't gotten there yet.
And then the question then lies, do you want the decommissioning plan in appendix TBD to be the same decommissioning plan that can be required under tier one and two? It's a little bit more extensive on the model law.
The model one, yeah, it is very...
Yeah, probably over, but if you use it for an on-farm, it might...
I guess it depends, maybe a one, but yeah, it depends about the on-farm law piece, yeah.
I think there's a numbering issue on page 158.
Two, that's changed to a ten.
But since there's an 11, then I think it should be...
Track changes hasn't followed through yet, because I found that on mine, too.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you look at mine, I've got nine, 10, 11, 12, 13.
And then I think this paragraph 12 on mine is actually another subsection in the model law under...
It's a three?
I think it's a three.
Oh, maybe.
So, it's under 11?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was all I noticed so far.
So, then this is twelve.
In a, in a quick review.
Can I have that?
Oh, my goodness.
For your reference.
Question. We call it a screening and landscaping plan. We call it a buffering plan somewhere else. We'll just pick one.
We're not consistent. We need to have a new one sent around. I just was taking what she did.
I added her note.
Oh, okay, oh, perfect, okay. Never mind, then, you keep yours.
Yeah, the only thing we have is that requirements thing, which is in two places.
Should we get it all figured out? I guess.
See, I printed one out that he's, you sent.
I'll send that.
Define what, define on-farm solar energy system is.
What is the model law say?
Something that's referenced in, uh...
It's not a defined term.
Yeah, a couple of ways of looking at it. I mean, anybody, is it a, is it a solar system?
On a farm.
It's on a farm. Well, if that's the case, it's automatically tier three, because it's larger than, than what the requirements are for tier two.
Special permit, or...
I'm thinking, taking that whole on-farm situation, taking it right out of tier one.
We can't, we can't.
But did you say, should we, did you look at the, should we look at the New York model again?
Mike just read it off to me. We'll, we'll do a more in-depth review on this on-farm.
I don't know, I would imagine.
Because I think with that over there, it's something that we really need to look into.
I would imagine, I would have to imagine, the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law, Chapter 69, Article 25-A, A, Section 305-A, maybe defines a little bit better what on-farm solar energy system is.
Okay, so we all look into on-farm.
It's gotta be defined somewhere.
If you're gonna have a solar system on a farm, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a state permit to it.
Oh, a New York state.
Why do you say that? What if it's just a small, I mean...
A large solar farm should be permitted through the state.
Yeah.
But that's...
What if it's not large, though?
See, there's different, there's different kinds of, I've had to look into the scrap. There's different kinds of your solar farms. There's, there's a certain farm that work, the community farms, which work with...
Those farms, on-farm solar is different than solar farm.
Yeah, right.
On-farm solar means that you're, you're building solar capacity on your existing agricultural use...
Or farm operations.
For the farm.
Yes.
That's what I would, that's what I would imagine.
In fact, you know what, it might, which is why we got into the thing about 110%, isn't it? You can't...
110% only applies to tier two.
Yeah, okay, and not in tier three, huh? But in tier one.
On-farm is tier one.
On-farm is tier one. I thought we put it in tier one.
No, it's in tier two. They can't exceed 110% of capacity.
I guess it's always been that way. Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
Oh, we didn't.
Nick a time, Natalie, I'm telling you. Nick a time.
Okay, so all we can put, what, an on-farm solar.
Nolly, you know, I might have gotten rid of where we first started with this.
Maybe we need a definition of on-farm solar in here.
Can you save all previous versions, Mike?
I do think there should be a definition of on-farm solar.
They're all also in the documents that I sent out to the board.
On-farm solar system. On-farm solar energy system, a solar energy system located on a farm, which is a farm operation, as defined by Article 25A, the Code of Markets Law, which may include one or more multiple contiguous or non-contiguous parcels. An agricultural constrict, which is designed, installed, and operated so that stated annual total amounts of electrical energy generated do not exceed more than 110%.
There you go.
And we do define farm operation.
I knew it was in there somewhere.
We do define farm operation.
Land and on-farm building equipment facilities and practices which move to park. Okay, but I think...
So, you have to be in an ag.
Trip hammer would be...
That is farm.
Would be a farm operation and can use an on-farm solar.
But it can't go over 110% of its...
Hold on a second, are they, is, I don't remember the district name. Is that an ag district?
It is.
But he's not, he's not in our, he's not in the ag district.
No, he's not.
That's got a special...
That is an ag exemption.
Tax, yeah, I was gonna say.
That's different. Ag district is one thing, ag tax exemption is separate. You can't use one for the other.
Well, I think it's, well, hold on, turn around, look. I think it's in a...
It's in, what is it, low-density residential?
Do we have an ag district?
The ag district could be an overlay. We have a tiny...
Up north, that's...
That?
Brown.
Yeah, the dark brown on the top.
So, this would just be on those brown parts?
Yep.
Okay.
So, Horowitz is...
So, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
Well, yeah, you know, everybody keeps forgetting that that's just hanging out there.
We should check and see, because the ag district, this is our zoning, but the ag district is an overlay that can apply to more than one zoning area. So, we determine... If you go to mapping Tompkins, we can look it up in a heartbeat.
Well, the ag rules in the ag district does not apply to low-density residential, the low-density residential.
And there is, as long as they agree that...
No, there, there is low-density residential within ag districts. Part of the, part of the goal of the ag districting process is to make sure that anybody and everybody who, who lives or owns property, does anything to property within an ag district, is aware that there could be agricultural practices within that district, and therefore, you can't complain. It's basically a way to protect farmers from, from the complaints of the neighbors. So, right, so if, let's pretend this is an ag district right here, and someone built houses in the ag district. You can have residential uses in an ag district. It's an overlay, not, it doesn't replace the zoning.
We have to be sure that...
Where is your ag district based on? New York State Ag District or local?
No, no, I wrote them four years ago. I just don't remember what they are.
No, I'm just saying that the rules, the areas, the reason that ag district was set out from, my understanding is, because a lot of times you had, it was based a lot on the whole signage, because you had a lot of small markets, if you want, roadside markets.
Oh, that comes with you.
So, they turned that into the ag district. This is what our, our district zoning is about. And those areas have special, for example, you can have certain signs, you can have all of these, like fruit stands and whatnot for that ag district, but all of that doesn't apply with the rest of the low-density residential. You couldn't do the same thing with low-density residential.
No, but if you're, if you're in an ag district, which is an overlay, and your ag happens to overlap a low-density residential...
Then they can complain.
So, for instance, at your house, if the ag district extended down to your house, you could put a farm stand out front. No one could complain. You'd have the right to do that.
If it did, but what I'm saying is, a large property operator isn't in our, our ag district.
Yeah, I don't know. It might be in the county ag district, in which case that would supersede and take precedence over our, is what you're saying.
Right, so what the county does, the county, every eight years, reviews all the districts, all the ag districts, and, and either shrinks them or enlarges them or whatever. And I did this in 2019 for this area. It's been a while, so I don't remember.
But being in an ag district, it's all part of the union, exactly.
Right, yeah.
Yes, that's our whole point.
That, right.
They can still be a farm and get their tax exemption, but when it comes time to be to be a, a real farm.
Right.
This may not.
You're not in our, you're not in our ag district.
But it might be in the county ag district.
But they might be in the county ag district, that's what we've got to determine.
Sure that, will the county?
They take precedent, just like they take.
Absolutely.
Precedent over.
You say that for everything on that map there, maybe it's in an ag district.
Because there definitely are residential.
We can find out.
Can we do that right now?
We can absolutely do it right now.
Can you do that right now?
Do we need to do it right now?
We don't need to do it right now.
Is it part of the solar law discussion? Because I'd really rather stay on, stay on point about it, and we can.
That's true.
Do some research.
But one of the questions that we have is, if this property is in the ag district, that means that they could put some up there on a tier one.
Yeah, exactly.
As long as, as long as.
110% of their usage.
110% of their usage.
Right.
But it means that they could put it up against the road here, or up against somebody's house here, and not have to be reviewed. So what we want to figure out is.
What it is.
Do we want to be able to review this?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it would follow buffering, well, not in tier one, it would.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah.
I have a friend who lives over there, so.
So your solar panel that butts up on.
Your property butts up against the edge of the.
I mean, I'm talking about Michael Center.
Isn't there a solar pin on verticular?
Yes, there is, there's the, that I'm in that.
The second house down from the temple, yeah?
Yep.
First house down from the temple.
Yeah, right here, they have a conference, they give, we're doing a short-term.
Yes.
Party house.
Party house.
It's like a party house.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll look at, we'll look at the thing site and figure out where the overlay is, just so we all know what parcels are. And then it's also subject to change, so it's something you can add on.
Yes, yes. Well, it won't change for another five more years, one more years. Whenever we do the change, we go to the town board and talk about the changes.
Got it. Good to know.
Okay.
Okay, very good point, so.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Something that we need to be aware of.
Didn't even know.
These things are never as simple as they think, they're not quite as simple. The simpler it looks, the worse it is.
So, Mike, don't forget, in here, we refer to the village three different ways. In cases, it says Village of Lansing Planning Board, sometimes it says Planning Board, and sometimes it says Village Planning Board.
Thought I cleaned that up.
No, we have to pick one, and the other one was sometime, the village code, were you gonna have it say Village of Lansing?
That I, that I went through, unless I missed one, that I went through when I said Village of Lansing, I standardized however it was to, is this the most?
Yeah, I'm looking at the.
Hang on a second, I thought that I standardized everywhere through here and said with.
Village of Lansing Code.
I think I just said village code.
Okay, yeah, village.
Village code, section, whatever. That's supposed to be everywhere, yeah.
And then.
But I'll, I'll go back through.
I wasn't, I was gonna make the, and then I didn't know which one you wanted to use for the planning board, whether you wanted to use Village of Lansing Planning Board. And also, it refers to the village clerk in here. On 157, do you want it to say Lansing Village Clerk in here?
We don't say Village of Lansing Code Enforcement Officer, we just say Code Enforcement Officer.
Oh, okay.
Say clerk, though.
Well, that was, the question was, do we want to say village clerk or just clerk? We don't say Village Code Enforcement Officer, we just say Code Enforcement Officer.
So speaking of the Code Enforcement Officer, we have his title a couple of different ways.
I would remember.
So either, are we gonna do Code and Zoning Officer? Because in one part, it says Code Enforcement Officer.
Well, but you have two roles, actually. That was part of our discussion, I thought.
I gotta cut down to two.
He's lighting commissioner, too.
Yes, I was gonna say, because he has, and he's water, stormwater management. So sometimes it's, he has an enforcement duty, right? Sometimes it's a zoning, not enforcement, but he's a code officer, has to inform about that. So I don't know.
Can Code and Zoning Officer cover that?
Code and Zoning Officer.
I think we.
Yeah, I think it's like an add-on here, like at the discretion of the Code Enforcement Officer, is probably why it got added in differently than what is previously agreed.
We used to call it Code and Zoning Officer everywhere?
Code and Zoning Officer.
You okay with that?
And zoning.
Code.
If you don't like how it looks afterwards, we can change it for you.
I, well, I think the first time I came across it, he said something about was CEO, and I'm going, heck, it's the CEO, you know? It's the Code Enforcement Officer.
That's how they refer to it, yeah.
You're the CZ, you're the CZ.
Listen, you can be whatever you call yourself, I've got a colleague who, when I fill out applications online, they say they're the president of Cornell University, and sure enough, they get emailed that says to the president of Cornell University, it comes there with their name on it, so.
Oh, great. Did we decide we're the Village of Lansing Planning Board, is that what was decided?
Yeah, which, which is it gonna be?
I would just say Planning Board, but.
Village.
Just the same way that we say, we'll say Code and Zoning Officer and Clerk.
Let's see what.
Okay, so one, I think in one instance, it says Village of Lansing Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Yeah, so they just say Planning Board, they don't say Village of Lansing, they don't say Village of Lansing Board of Trustees.
Or you could just say.
I'll have to go through and check them all, because there's three different versions in here, I think.
Planning Board.
They just say Planning Board, I mean, the current code.
Yeah.
Just a few that I saw just say Planning Board.
On page 156 at the bottom, under decommissioning plan, it says Village Planning Board.
Yeah, I'll fix it.
Okay, Planning.
In fact, it's that way in a few, I think I found them all.
Planning Board and Code and Zoning Officer, is that it?
Besides, whatever I miss, Natalie, I'll get when she does more than a quick review.
Oh, well, I guess if we're talking about what the current code says.
I'm sure it's different in different places.
It is, probably.
Yes, I was gonna say, I wouldn't be using that as our standard if you.
It says Code of the Village of Lansing and Village Zoning and Code Officer, but.
Say again?
What does it say, Code and Zoning Officer?
Village Zoning and Code Officer.
Zoning.
Zoning.
Oh, boy.
God, I mean.
And it always says the Village of Lansing Code.
That one does, yeah, because I looked at some other section, and I looked at some other section when I came up with Code Enforcement Officer, because Wendy, we had talked, we had this discussion, too.
Yeah.
So I went and looked at a couple of different places in Code, and it said Code Enforcement Officer, I was like, oh, Code.
I know, can you imagine if you did define this whole thing?
Oh, and here says Village of Lansing Planning Board.
See there.
See, I, I guess I'm, I'm of the, I, I like sort of, I think, I don't know, it's very redundant, I know, but I would just do what it is.
Well, whatever we do, we should be consistent the next time we do. Oh, you know, maybe I looked at the tree law when I picked some stuff, actually.
There you go.
At least the most recent thing, I looked at the tree law, at least that way it would be.
Consistent with this year, or whatever.
This is not an ag district.
Okay.
It is not, yeah, there's only two properties in the village.
Right there, that's.
That's not us.
A combining marketing thing.
That one is.
Okay, that's the only one, that's the only one, then.
Good.
It's in the village.
Yeah.
Good. That helps.
Okay.
So, thank you. Oh, good. So basically, that would be the only place that could, in the village, look for a tier one on-farm.
There was a little.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good. Thank you for checking.
Yeah.
Jim, did you have any comments about the solar?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I think that always made a lot of really good points.
Make some changes and I'll circulate another.
Start over.
We will not be this week. No, it's not starting over, I mean, it's.
No, no.
That's like little stuff, that's.
Actually, no, most of this is.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not.
You're getting really close, it's to the end.
I don't know, I think that one's gonna be doing a big rewrite.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the trustee report.
Well, I'm the augustal trustee reporter in person, and since everybody here was at the meeting, I don't think there's anything for me to add.
Yeah, I think we're good, Jim. Okay, other business, Lorraine?
Nothing.
No?
Lisa?
No.
Emilio?
Nothing, just how exciting it is that the sewer is going in.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, my gosh, however, they, they parked their trencher in my yard, and I have this, I mean, you know how heavy that machine is?
Yeah.
I hope they're going to. There's like a big ditchy thing, and I can't deal with that. You need, have the equipment to kind of fill this back in. I'm assuming that they're gonna pave before winter, horse pavement or whatever, but I'm, somebody needs, I was gonna call John and ask.
Like it's on your property?
Well, they moved it along, it's gone, you know?
But it was on your property.
But it was, they parked it there for a couple of days. I mean, they had to, really.
Yeah.
But I seem to be the only yard that got destroyed. They, no, they really have been very accommodating. I came back in the middle of a rainstorm, and they were in my driveway, and they had to fill the ditch in and pack it down while I waited so I could get access to my.
Yeah.
Where my husband is, who's not supposed to be alone much, so. It was like, oh, but they've been very good about that, they really have, it's just this, it's about a two-foot.
Oh, jeez.
Where the tread went, I just can't deal with it. Can't, so.
Yeah, talk to John.
But I was gonna, I haven't seen them since, it's lovely, it's so quiet, isn't it?
No speeding cars.
It was so, but really, once they got that thing in, I mean, they really made progress.
Yeah.
So, they're getting there.
Adding time to my day.
I know. Well, every time you have somebody come, you're not sure what to tell them where to go. Pretty much now, you can come down Oak Crest, yeah, because that was out of commission for a day or two.
Yeah. That was fun when they were both out.
I, well, we went away, and I was so glad, I thought, we're getting out in the nick of time.
Yeah.
And we went out East Shore Drive, because it was the only way.
Yes, that's how I.
But no, it'll be great when they tidy up a little, because I thought, I guess I'd better.
My unlimited car washes have come in handy.
Oh, my God, yes. For the first couple of days, I hosed the mud off my car tires. Given up. You can just give up, waste of water. I'll have.
Ask a question, Mike, just out of curiosity, what's the status or what's going on with what, what was the Sheraton and then became a trip hotel, and now it looks like it's got a fence around it, and it's not in good shape, I mean.
Nothing, they still have violations through the health department and through the code office that they haven't addressed.
I mean, are they, are they gonna redevelop it as a motel or tear it down, or?
Your guess is as good as mine, not to tear it down.
Oh.
Please.
Because it's starting, it's starting to look pretty bedraggled.
They started.
It is.
At least they took the overhang off.
Yes.
They started working on it, and they were trying, they had contacted the health department, they had contacted me, saying they wanted to have it up and going by end of April for summer, it was before graduation, and they said they wanted to have that done, so they were gonna get ahold of us, the health department, get ahold of me, we're gonna get over there, we're gonna see what they fixed and whatnot, I've heard a thing from them since.
He's too busy with this other place.
With, with the blue one?
With the blue. There are actually people staying there.
I know.
Weekend that looked busy.
Well, it's. Any storm, you know?
I know, right?
Really, I didn't think, I didn't think there was any lodging activity there, or any kind of activity there.
No, not at the Sheraton, he owns also the Oprah Mall.
Holiday.
Yes.
The blue, it's the blue there across from the.
The old holiday, years ago, it was a holiday, yeah.
Yeah, before that, well, at one point, wait, what's that? Oh, no.
Howard Johnson was where Tom sits.
Or Howard, yeah.
Yeah, Howard Johnson was where Applebee's is now.
Yeah, yeah.
Frederick, while looking at.
I'd say the blue motel, I thought that was still going, was that one?
It's still.
Yeah, it's still going, yeah.
Because there were comments.
That's in the trip, fiance both.
Yeah, no, there were comments about Keguaboo, sort of like, you don't know what you're getting into.
Pretty sure he does.
Oh, I mean, I mean, staying there.
That's it?
Oh, yeah, staying there.
Yeah.
Really?
So is there anything else that we should know about that's exciting going on around town?
I'll see your turn, Mike. I'll see your turn, Mike.
So isn't my turn?
It is.
Other than I'll get ahold of Alex. I wouldn't mind having him come in about that PDA and giving you the version that he gave the trustees, right from the bottom up. Go through the whole, you know, what their plan are, what their plan is, what they plan on doing to the buildings. Because you guys just passed the GATA, Reader's Digest version the other day. You didn't get, he didn't go through the whole process.
No, I mean.
I know you had questions on it, because we were talking about it.
Yeah.
So if he comes in and goes through it, then you can generate some questions and some, if you're needing more information, we've got to gather everything up so that, you know, we get to a point where, what is it called? A?
Developers' Conference.
We gotta get all the information together. Then we can start really digging into it. But I want to get him in here because most of you have, did not see the original. Do you agree with the original?
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea if you guys.
He was, you know, though, he was much clearer last week than he was at the original. In fact, at the original.
Well, that's right. You were in the middle of the thunderstorm.
Yeah, yeah, yes. But he was a little iffy on certain things, like he didn't know some of the things. And I do remember he mentioned at the first one, he, you know, he was going through, you know, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, and maybe some four bedrooms. Now, this time, there was no four bedrooms, including in the materials that he passed out. There was nothing about four bedrooms in there.
Well, I'm, I'm sure he's taken some orders.
And at that, in the first meeting, he didn't even, what kind of housing it was gonna be. But at least now you know it's workforce housing.
Hotel built there and stuff.
Yeah, well, the guy probably wants like $10 million for that property. You know, the day that I come around that corner and see that pool is gone will make me so happy. There's no structure back there. It just.
So we'll have, next meeting, you'll have Eric's public hearing. You'll have, I don't know about the beers in here or not. That's another thing that you and I'll discuss.
Yeah.
You're gonna have New Sheen back, and then you might have Alex here for a presentation.
Can we push Alex off to the next one? Because that's a lot, depending on if the beer's showing.
And Eric always have two, we'll have two prayers.
I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to attend next time.
And the other thing is, I'm still not sitting right with me this on-farm, so.
Did you hear what Emilia said about there's only one parcel that has the overlay?
It's the bottom.
The bottom, the back.
And there's a little.
Not even the pole of the ground.
Just the bottom.
Only the bottom.
Because it's in, the rest is in Lansing, isn't it?
No, this is the top one.
The top, Panda.
It's too large.
Oh, no.
Yes, it's a lot.
That one is.
Yeah.
This is in the district.
And I did know there was one over on Trip Hammer. There's just that little CRS. I forgot.
But let's say that he does put a farm up. He wants to put a farm up here, okay?
But it's not a farm.
It is in the eyes of maybe the county and state.
It isn't in the eyes of the county.
It's not the eyes.
That's a sheet.
Then what about the state?
Well, the state adopts the county's legislation for the ag district overlay.
Okay.
But if he's.
So he could, in four years.
Go and ask to become.
He can petition to be added to the district.
He has a term that he has to go through.
That's for the exemption, isn't it?
He's got a, well, that's.
Well, the exemption is irrelevant, but if you want to be added into the ag district in four years, he can petition to be added to it. And then whoever is doing it at that point reviews, like, whether it is actually farm operation or not, whether it does, you know, qualify as an ag district piece, and then it could be added in.
Okay, so that's good to know also, because times change.
Times do change.
So we want to be careful, if we can.
Our hands are quite tied.
Yes, they are.
Just be mindful of what could replace them.
Yeah, so for obvious reasons, I want to be crystal clear on this.
Yes.
Other than that.
Two of the same thing. So we have a meeting on December 26th, 26th.
December?
December 26th, the day after Christmas. I'd like to cancel that.
Okay.
Really? Okay. We also have one on October 31st, which is Halloween, that I would like to cancel.
What about the one right after Thanksgiving?
When's that? The 28th? Is that the day after Thanksgiving?
No, it's not the day after, but we always traditionally, nothing ever happens usually. And so we end up saying, oh, no, we'll have it. And then we end up canceling it at the last minute. That's why I'm asking, I guess.
And if it's a Tuesday after Thanksgiving, I won't be here.
I was gonna say, I won't either, so.
Okay, so that would be the, yeah, the 20th.
That would be the, the 28th. If you say have a farm, though, yeah.
Well, are people, I mean, yeah, we can.
What can get to you when we get?
Play it by ear when we get closer. The 31st, though, and the 26th, though, I'd like to.
Cancel.
Cancel, if people are okay with that.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So we'll see how our agenda looks for the.
Do we have to do a motion?
For the November one.
Do we do a motion to cancel meetings, do we?
We should put it on there, though, on the.
It'll be in the minutes, yeah.
You know what? I think I might have this on-farm piece.
What?
Because we're not so concerned about roof-mounted.
No.
At all.
No.
It's really only if it's ground-mounted. So what we could do is we could have, you know, ground, we could actually, because we say here.
Where are you?
So six A, B, C, D, all, A, B, C, D all talk about mounted. So we could have E talk about ground-mounted, and we could say ground-mounted solar or on-farm solar. It could be subject to planning board review based on, for discretion of the.
So we don't have to allow it?
I wonder, though, if that falls under the, that section of law that says it can't be a special permit or a site plan review or.
Ask for, well.
But this is on-farm, not agricultural, is the point.
Right.
It's not agricultural.
Right, that, 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 that piece of legislation I've read off is on-farm. It's not ag. It's on-farm.
Oh, okay.
So it's got to be non, pretty much you can't have them do anything extra. It's a site plan review. I can go pull it back.
Then, okay, so the one thing that we'd all be concerned about is some sort of buffering of any ground-mounted ever, anywhere, whether it's on-farm or not. So could we, in the piece where we have a general set of requirements, we could ask for a buffering plan in the general requirements?
But the planning board doesn't see any tier one application if it's.
Except for the discretion of.
She can make, she can make sure it's buffered.
But if it's roof-mounted.
Sorry. Keep pointing.
If it's ground-mounted, we do, unless it's on-farm.
You're the buffering commissioner, yeah.
Right, so that's, that's the thing. It's, it's, the only time tier one really becomes an issue for us if it's ground-mounted.
All right, we need to think about this.
Yeah. But if we think about some sort of language that applies to all ground-mounted.
If we can, given New York State law.
Yeah.
But since this isn't a unified permit. It's our own special little. Oh, boy.
Farm operation. In accordance with Agriculture and Markets Law number 3011. Oh, my god.
Yeah.
Land and on-farm buildings, equipment, facilities, and production, purchase, and marketing crops.[1629.62]